In accordance with the open public's meaning, Sac. 231 adequate notes of this meeting have been provided as follows. On December 13th, 2018, those who sent to the homies of the here, the our ledger and local source and the court of municipality by state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. Going to take a roll call now. Mrs. Beviano, present. Mrs. Birch, here. Mr. Gargano, here. Ms. Gilliam, here. Ms. Johnson, here. Ms. Kozak, here. Ms. Mangello, I'm sorry, here. Mr. Martuzzi, here. Mr. Shahada, here.
Thank you, Ms. Gaylord. Before this Gaylord begins the meeting, as the board secretary, I just wanted to wish everybody a happy new year. A welcome back to our veteran board members and a warm welcome to our new board members who will be sworn in tonight. I'd also like to recognize some dignitaries that we have in the room tonight. Our honorable mayor, Dara Garmsdott, is here tonight. Mayor, thanks for coming. We also have some of our esteemed city council persons, in no particular order. I see Councilman Mohammed, Councilwoman Orman, Councilwoman Roman, Councilwoman Javik. Enough to pass an ordinance. And we're talking to all of our parents and staff members and those in attendance. Thank you and happy new year.
The following election was held on November 6th, 2018, for three members to the Linden Board of Education for a three-year term. Patrick Gargano, 4,439 votes. Doris Johnson, 4,453 votes. Mary Anthony Manganello, 4,376 votes. I declare that the following person, as duly elected, as members of the Linden Board of Education as a result of the election held on Tuesday, November 6th, 2018, for a three-year term, Patrick Gargano, Doris Johnson, and Mary Anthony Manganello. Now we will administer the vote from the office to the newly elected board members. To Gargano.
Aye.
Aye. Patrick Gargano.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
The governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Patrick Gargano.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant.
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant.
To RS-19:4-1.
To RS-19:4-1.
And not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime.
And not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime.
Or offense listed in.
Or offense listed in NJSA. NJSA.
18A:
ATA:
12-1.
12-1.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
That the office according to the best of my ability.
That the office according to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Ready, guys? One, two. One, two. One more. Here.
Rage, you're right here.
Nothing but. Okay, speak after me. Aye.
Aye. Mary Anthony Manganello.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And the governments established in the United States.
And the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
In this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye. Mary Anthony Manganello.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law for the office of a member of the Board of Education.
Prescribed by law for the office of a member of the Board of Education.
And not disqualified as a voter.
And not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS-19:4-1.
Pursuant to RS-19:4-1.
I am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime.
I am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime.
Or offense listed in NJSA.
Or offense listed in NJSA.
18A:
12-1.
12-1. And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
All the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Ready, guys? Right here. One more.
Thank you. Thank you.
I had it at the first talk, see.
Aye.
Doris Johnson. Aye, Doris Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And the governments established in the United States.
And the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Doris Johnson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
For office of member of the Board of Education.
And not disqualified as a voter.
And not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS-19:4-1.
Pursuant to RS-19:4-1.
And not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime.
And not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime.
Or offense listed in NJSA.
Or offense listed in NJSA.
18A:12-1.
18A:12-1.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of that office according to the best of my ability.
Perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2019 Cleveland Board of Education. Dawn Beviano, Ms. Gilliam, Gregory Martuzzi, Kristen and Birch, Hattori Kozak, Ahmed Shahada, Patrick Gargano, Doris Johnson, and Mary Anthony Manganello.
Second.
Roll call. Mrs. Beviano.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mr. Gargano.
Yes.
Gilliam.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Kozak.
Yes.
Ms. Manganello.
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Yes.
Mr. Shahada.
Yes.
At this time, I entertain the nomination for the office of President of the Linden Board of Education. I'd like to nominate Dawn Beviano as the president. I would like to nominate Gregory Martuzzi as president. So according to our bylaws that we passed in November, a board member can't be president if they have ethics charges pending or against them. There are no ethics charges pending or against them. I have no notification. I received no notification of any pending charges. Number one. And number two, a current board or a prior board during a lame duck session is not allowed to bind future boards. And that is what was done at the November 20th meeting. Did anybody get an opinion from school boards like they said they were going to from Mr. Martuzzi?
I don't know what opinion you're talking about from school boards. You're allowed to pass policy. The only thing you're not allowed to do is make appointments that would go before the sitting or action that takes place before. You can totally pass policy at any time. That's the board's. That's absolutely the board's right.
You cannot bind a future board with a policy that eliminates all the members except for the members that were in that committee. You had four board members, two aren't even here anymore. Two didn't come to the meeting to vote. And I contacted school boards, by the way, and they said that this was a lame duck meeting. This was a lame duck session. And you cannot tie the hands of future boards by a policy that restricted the rights of other board members.
I disagree with that opinion from school boards. I mean, you're allowed to, as a board, to vote on policy. It takes some practice as soon as it's ready to pass the two. It doesn't, it's, I disagree.
Well, that's fine. We're going to go forward with this, and if somebody wants to challenge it, please feel free to challenge it. But now we're going to go forward with the vote. Mrs. Beviano, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
I am going to conduct a roll call vote for Dawn Beviano as president for the Board of Education. Mrs. Beviano, yes. Mrs. Birch, yes. Mr. Gargano.
abstain.
Ms. Gilliam.
yeah.
Ms. Johnson.
abstain.
Ms. Kozak.
no.
Ms. Manganello.
no.
Mr. Martuzzi.
abstain.
Mr. Shahada.
Yes.
The woman that's been on the board for this many years.
The vote does not pass.
Of course it doesn't. It's all the way down.
Motion made by Ms. Manganello to nominate Mr. Martuzzi for president. Mr. Martuzzi, do you accept the nomination?
I give it.
I will now call a roll call vote for Mr. Martuzzi for president of the Board of Education. Mrs. Beviano.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
no.
Mr. Gargano.
yes.
Ms. Gilliam.
yes.
Ms. Johnson.
yes.
Ms. Kozak.
yes.
Ms. Manganello.
yes.
Mr. Martuzzi.
yes.
Mr. Shahada.
yes.
I now declare the election of the new president of the Board of Education to Mr. Gregory Martuzzi, and I turn over the gavel to him. Congratulations.
I have a couple things that we have to do as far as business concern, and as the newly-elected president, my job is to entertain motions for vice president of the Linden School Board. So at this time, motions are open on the floor for vice president of the Linden School Board.
I'd like to nominate Dawn Beviano as vice president. First, I will take a vote on Mrs. Beviano. Mrs. Beviano, do you accept the nomination? No. Mrs. Beviano does not accept the nomination for vice president. Motion made by Ms. Manganello to nominate Ms. Kozak for vice president. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Gilliam. To nominate Ms. Kozak for vice president. Ms. Kozak, do you accept the nomination? I will take a roll call now. Mrs. Beviano.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
no.
Ms. Birch, Mr. Gargano.
yes.
Ms. Gilliam.
yes.
Ms. Johnson.
yes.
Ms. Kozak.
yes.
Ms. Manganello.
Mr. Martuzzi.
yes.
Mr. Shahada.
yes.
I'd like to nominate personnel number 11ABC and personnel number 5. Actually, I have a question. Upon reviewing my agenda last night when I received it, there were some items on there that I was concerned about because we've never had as part of our reword agenda. I know that our agenda should, according to our bylaws, be made by our president and/or the superintendent. Since we didn't have a president, Dr. Albertozzi, did you ask for any changes maybe to two of our policies and our committees and the changing of the board dates, the board meeting dates?
No, I didn't have.
So then who petitioned agenda together? So they did this agenda without your input?
I received the agenda yesterday at the time the rest of the board received the agenda.
So they did it without your input?
Correct.
I did it as the official officer of the board in place of the president until a new president was elected.
Okay, but you weren't allowed to make policy changes.
I've never.
Change our committees.
Many things. I didn't change anything.
Okay, so then how do you all get changed? Because it's either our agenda from November.
Okay. First of all, it was never done before to even meet with the superintendent on the agenda for the organization. That's number one. Number two, I have always put whatever I was told to put on an agenda. So why?
Who told you to put a board member? Who told you to put policy changes and add another meeting date and.
The board change.
Standing committees.
That is on the agenda for the board to discuss at this point in time, but it was never done before because the board never followed the policy before. Unfortunately. Yeah, I learned a lot in the last two months over this day. And this discussion is not about this. The discussion is about the next items. Very upsetting.
Yes.
Very upsetting.
Yes, very upsetting.
May I take a roll call then?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
I'm sorry, I'm upset.
Did we ask who put it on the agenda? Had you put on the agenda?
Yes. I said I put it on the agenda. So I did the agenda on board secretary.
So the board never told you to?
I was asked to make the policy changes.
Okay.
Right, but a single board member can't make that. It has to be done.
I'm sorry, these are personnel appointments. Yeah, be made by the superintendent. I mean, you and Denise, sorry, you and Miss Cleary are tenured employees, so it's a matter of form, but they're personnel appointments, so they're required to be there on that situation superintendent. So the board will vote for her. Well, that's really interesting, Matt, because this is the same agenda we've been using for the last 15 years.
It is, but you know, this has to happen.
Well, you know, you've been the attorney for all these years, and nobody ever told me to change it.
Ms. Gaylord, please call the roll.
Mrs. Beviano.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
yep.
Mr. Gargano.
abstain.
Ms. Gilliam.
yes.
Ms. Johnson.
yes.
Ms. Kozak.
yes.
Ms. Manganello.
yes.
Mr. Martuzzi.
yes.
Ms. Shahada.
yes.
I made a motion to both parliaments, seat number six, for policy number eight, regulation number seven, eight, approval of job description, and number nine, adoption of official newspaper M.I.A. press release.
Seven.
Mrs. Beviano. Yes on all, no on number seven. Mr. Gargano.
yes.
Ms. Gilliam.
yes.
Ms. Johnson.
yes.
Ms. Kozak.
yes.
Ms. Manganello.
yes.
Mr. Martuzzi.
yes.
Mr. Shahada.
I guess all of them, no seven and no shame, let's get over this version.
Yes.
You said no seven. No, I'm sorry, Ms. Birch. No on number seven unless, you know. Mrs. Beviano. Can we discuss before we do roll call, Mr. President? Because there's a, where it says education committee does not match up to the committee list that was put together for 9130. There is a curriculum instruction committee on the policy of 9130, but it does not show understanding committees of the order of business. I know that, and it's a change on board policy and regulations number seven. But in the copy that you have, it doesn't say that. Correct, but you, in the past, you have done, these agendas have been done, I have done them. No one ever followed the board policy that said that it has to get board approval. In order to make different committees, it has to be in, it has to be approved by the board. Kathy, on the revision on the 9130, it says curriculum instruction. On number 10, it says education committee. That's what my concern is.
That's the main change of the group. It doesn't match.
You have a board bylaw. Your own bylaw has standing. I understand that, because those committees are changing.
But that's only on.
But it's only on athletic committee, number three, four, five, and six. Curriculum instruction still says curriculum instruction. That's my lane. Okay, question. You can go free to vote now.
It's not about voting, though. She's pointing out there's an error, Ms. Gaylord. What you're voting on is an education committee, but the policies or the curriculum instruction.
On the revision that you sent us.
You just need to change it to one or the other. You just have to all look at the same thing. Nobody's arguing about it. You just make it a clarification.
Okay, yes, I see that. But also athletics should, also athletics. Curriculum and instruction is now the education. So the bylaw of admitting, I see what you're saying, Dawn, I'm sorry. The number two on your. Number two on your, this is why there's the first reading. Number two should say education committee, not curriculum and instruction. If you look at the body of it, it's the same as it was, except it doesn't have technology.
Which I don't understand why. This technology is part of our.
Look, we will correct that. It's correctable, and we'll vote on it now. It's correctable for first reading.
Okay, I can't understand. I shouldn't do it.
Thank you.
Your policy is a first reading, but this is your order of business.
The order of business goes.
But this isn't passed yet. This is only passed for a reading. So we have an order of business? So we're not allowed to have discussion? Your current bylaw sets for standing. You passed a amendment on first reading. But it doesn't become a bylaw until second reading. So right now, your order of business, again, it's correct. We get next meeting from your last meeting. But right now, your order of business doesn't match with your bylaw. Okay, I'm sorry, this is.
We'll correct that.
So that I can correct.
Maggie, we'll correct that. You understand?
Now you're down to her.
Thank you.
Stop doing that. So we're not going to have a discussion?
No, we're not. We're voting on the motion now.
We can't have a discussion about agenda items now? Mrs. Birch.
no.
Mr. Gargano. Ms. Gilliam. Ms. Johnson. Ms. Kozak.
yes.
Ms. Manganello.
yes.
Mr. Martuzzi.
yes.
Mr. Shahada.
yes.
Mr. Martuzzi, for the record, there's an abstention. What does an abstention count for?
A non-vote.
Yes, an abstention is a non-vote with the exception of if it becomes a deciding vote that's passed right from the New Jersey school board's two meetings. Okay.
Mrs. Beviano, no. Mrs. Birch, no. Mr. Gargano.
yes.
Ms. Gilliam.
yes.
Ms. Johnson.
yes.
Ms. Kozak.
yes.
Ms. Manganello.
yes.
Mr. Martuzzi.
yes.
Okay, the next thing that we have to do, and all bylaw that school boards have to do every year is recite these next 11 items regarding New Jersey State School Board Association 18824. What we're going to do, we will start with Mrs. Beviano. We will horse you around the room. I will read your attendance and we will back up with U number 10. Okay, Mrs. Beviano, can you read A, please? A, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desireed changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. B, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of our children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social status.
C, I will refine my board actions, policy making, planning, and appraisal. And I will help to plan policies and plan only after the board has consulted those who will be required by them.
Credit me. I will carry out my responsibilities, not to administrators of the school, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run.
E, I will recognize that authority rests with the board's education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board.
Amen.
A, I will read you this surrender. My independent judgment, my special interest, my rights and political views, but neither the school nor person in name will be given a chance.
That's right. And J, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to schools which are physically indisposed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. For all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to this chat the aspirations of the community's board school.
That's right, that's what you're supposed to do.
A, I will go to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the regulations of the Chief Administrative Officer.
I, I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties.
J, I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer and will act on the complaints that publicly use only after failure of an administrative solution.
Oh, may I have a second on that, please? Second.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Humber?
Yes.
Mrs. Gargano?
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Kozak?
Yes.
Ms. Maganello?
Yeah.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
In the last section here on Section 13, I'm not going to read all of this. It's just, it lists, as you can see on your agenda, all of the board members, Dr. Obotozi, Denise Cleary, Ms. Gaylord, and Ms. Dornin regarding the New Jersey School Board Associations, any of the conferences and things like that, which will be approved for them to go to during the upcoming year. Okay? And I believe I need a, I'll give a motion, I need a second on that.
Mr. President, can I add one minor change to the solution? We sometimes get last minute invitations to Jersey Department of Education meetings sponsored by the DOE. Often not in time for a board meeting, so can we add NJDOE to the blanket?
You can do that, that's no problem. All right. Just before you take the roll call, I just want to remind everyone to abstain from your own name. Oh, that's right, that was the second one, not me again? You just abstain from your own name. So you vote yes, abstain from your own. Right.
Mrs. Beviano? Abstain from Dawn Beviano, yes on all others. Mrs. Humber?
Abstain from Tracy Humber, yes on all others.
Mr. Gargano?
Abstain from Patrick Gargano, yes on all others.
Ms. Gilliam?
Abstain also, Mr. Gilliam, and yes on all others.
Ms. Johnson?
Abstain from Doris Johnson, yes on all others.
Ms. Kozak?
Abstain from Dawn Beviano, yes, by the Alice.
Ms. Maganello?
Abstain from Mary Anthony Maganello, yes on all others.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Abstain, Mr. Martuzzi, and yes to all others.
Mr. Shahada?
Abstain, yes to all others.
Hey, board members, new board members, would you like to have anything to say before we ask for adjournment? Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi, if I may, again, welcome to our new board members and our veteran board members. I really look forward to working with you tonight. You have become elected officials. It is an enormous responsibility that I know you won't take lightly. You will always do what's in the best interest of kids. That's what we're looking for, working together. Just a couple of quick things. Make sure before you leave tonight, the new board members get your picture taken. We're going to get you an ID. Make sure that, and any of our veteran board members, if you want a new picture, you're welcome to get one. I'll get you IDs, new IDs, and I'm going to get you business cards. You have my number. Now that you are an elected official, the complaints will come your way. They will find you in Chopper. They will find you online. They will find you everywhere. As a board member, when a complaint comes to you, please bring it to me. I will see what happens, solve it. Okay, you can call me anytime. That's my job, that's what I'm here for. And then one last thing. Tuesday night, next Tuesday, we have a meeting.
That's perfect.
The agenda really is just to do the Florida. But we need to add some business to it, if that's okay, Mr. President. I have some home instruction appointments and some minor curriculum things that need to be added. You will get the agenda tomorrow. Will that be enough time for you to do that? Well, you're going to get the agenda tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. For, okay.
I have very, very.
It's ready, yeah, that works.
I need home instructors and then we got a couple of curriculum things that we need to get done for QZAC. Minor stuff, definitely.
So again, welcome. Again, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this evening. Welcome the three new board members. It's a lot of work. I've surfed on both City Council and the Board of Ed, and I can tell you one thing.